Carol, let's call the meeting to order. Planning Board and Staff, would you introduce yourself, where you're calling from, and if anyone's with you? Carol?
Okay, I'm the Planner, Carol Bunt, and I'm in my office by myself.
Okay, now we have Jason Dennis filling in for Peter Malia.
Yes, good evening, I am in our office and I am by myself.
Okay, see Ray Corber is not here yet, oh yeah, he is, Ray Corber is here.
Yes, hi, Ray Corber, I am in my office and I am by myself.
Okay, and Paul?
I'm at my home and my wife is in the other room.
Okay, OJ?
I'm here at my house in Lincoln by myself.
Steve?
Yeah, I'm home in the bedroom alone.
Okay, Joe?
Here at the office with my dog.
Okay, Jim Stanos, I'm here alone at the office, and we also have Mark Irman.
I'm Mark Irman, I'm an alternate and I'm in my home in Bedford, New Hampshire, and I'm alone.
Thank you, all right, so we have four boards tonight, no one's excused, we don't have to seat any alternates. See, why don't we do the minutes, consideration of the meeting minutes from April 14th, 2021. Does anyone have any changes, comments, corrections? Now, is there a motion to approve as presented?
It's approved.
There a second, all second, all in favor, raise your right hand and signify and say aye.
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 Any who oppose, extensions? Next, April 28th, 2021. Does anyone have anything?
I didn't get that.
We don't have those yet, excuse me.
I haven't received them yet.
Okay.
Okay.
Don't worry about that. All right, next item on the agenda, continuing of the business, SBI 2021-01, MAP 112118, Clark Littleton Hospital, subdivision and site plan review applicants, Littleton Development Medical Properties, Inc., 800 West Madison Street, Suite 400, Chicago, Illinois, Littleton Hospital Association, PBA Littleton Regional Hospital, 600 St. Transby Road, Littleton, New Hampshire, 03561, property owners Brendan Clark, Benjamin Clark, Jennifer Franz, U Box 9, Lincoln, New Hampshire, 03251-0009. Agent Surveyor Engineer Kathy Kerchek, Conway PE, Horizons Engineering, 34 School Street, Littleton, New Hampshire, property railroad street land only, MAP 11218, property is located in the general use GU District, subdivision proposal applicant for subdivision proposes to buy one lot into two lots at the end of Railroad Street, 50 feet private way. Excuse me, 50 foot private right of way, lot is currently 5.51 acres, applicant proposes to subdivide it into two parcels, lot 1, 33,867 square feet or 0.77 acres, and lot 2, 206,369 square feet or 4.74 acres. One new lot will be created, improvements, these lots, extensions of municipal water and sewer lines, and extension of utilities will be required. The plan includes shared access easements to lots 1 and 2, site plan review, lot 1 above 33,869 square feet or 0.77 acres, development of 4,000 square feet, medical office building with associated parking in lot number 1, and lot 2 above 206,369 square feet or 4.74 acres, development of 48,000 square feet medical office building with associated parking on lot 2. First public hearing was held on March 24, 2021, the application was found to be complete, the application's presentation and public hearing was started, the hearing was continued to Wednesday, April 28th, 2021, at 6:00 PM, applicant's presentation and public hearing continued but not completed, the hearing was continued Wednesday, May 12th, 2021. Okay, Kathy, can you update us the changes, what's transpired since our last meeting?
I can do that, Jeff, did you want to speak first?
No, hold off, you go ahead.
Okay, all right, thank you, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so since our last meeting on April 28th, we submitted a revised C3, and what we added to sheet C3 is the, I guess the point of stormwater discharge underneath the DOT right of way. You'll notice just to the title block down in the lower right corner, we added the 24 inch culvert that crosses the highway. And then on sheet C5, we added the note regarding the I-93 sign way over on the northernmost driveway that ZBA approval would be required for this sign. We also added the option C sign graphic for the 75 foot sign. And then we also added no left turn of the two northernmost driveways that go onto Railroad Street. We also included in your packet just another copy of the subdivision plan because we hadn't really updated or seen that since the initial submittal, so I just wanted to make sure we all had a clean copy of that. We, regarding the condition of Railroad Street, I did reach out to Nate, but I haven't heard any, anything back in terms of what the concerns are with Railroad Street, the portion that's the town road. It's also my understanding regarding public analysis that Weston and Sampson will be reviewing that and they have all of the information that they need. And there haven't been any changes in the sewer capacity analysis or the stormwater analysis. It's my understanding that Ray is currently reviewing those. We also completed an opinion of probable construction cost for the site stabilization related to the budget at the last meeting. We prepared that and submitted that and have an estimate of $75,000 for that. And then in terms of the DOT permit and traffic analysis, Karna was out there, I believe, last week to gather traffic information, working on his report, and we'll have that completed by the end of the month. We, because this is access to the state highway off of a town road, the town is actually the applicant for the DOT driveway permit, so we submitted that application package to Nate Haddaway because it's my understanding as the Public Works Director, he's the one that would review and sign that application, so. So that application is, it's with Nate right now. So I think that addresses all of the questions and items that were brought up last month and our resubmittal, and tonight we're here to hope that we will get a conditional approval so that we can be moving forward with the project. The only other state permit is the alteration of terrain, and that has been submitted and accepted by D E S.
Okay, any board members have any questions at this time? Paul?
Yeah, I have several, so Kathy, the hydraulic analysis for the water, sewer, and fire protection. That's been done, that's currently sitting in raised hands, and it's been a couple of weeks, Ray, do you have any updates on that?
Yeah, we've completed our review of the water capacity analysis, the sewer capacity analysis, and Weston Sampson, we had a conversation with them today about completing the hydraulic analysis. We expect them to, we got, they have to issue us a task order, get them under contract to do the work, and they're in the process of putting that together, and they expect to have their review done by the end of the month.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I mean, how about the stormwater plan, Ray, have you reviewed that?
We have reviewed the drainage design, we have not yet reviewed the drainage analysis, that being the hydro gad model, we received that on the 28th, and we haven't gotten to that piece of it yet. We expect to get that done this week.
And Kathy, the alteration of train permit, there's no new status on except for it's been submitted, do you not have any idea when it's going to be, when the state will look at that?
It's been submitted and accepted, so that's kind of, I guess, an update, is that they accepted it as complete. They do have 90 days to review it, so.
And when did you, and when did you submit it?
We submitted that right around April 26th or 27th, I believe.
I think it was the 28th, Kathy.
Okay, I'm sorry, yep.
April 28th. We talked about the condition of Railroad Street, I know, I know that you said you couldn't get ahold of Nate. I'm a little, I can understand why in two weeks someone can get ahold of you and talk about the condition of Railroad Street and what the, what the concerns were, but I mean, the fact that it was brought up at the last meeting, it's been two weeks. Does anyone, Ray, have you talked to Nate about this?
Yes. Is Nate on the, is Nate on this meeting or not?
He's not here.
Okay, so I'll speak to it, so yeah, so we have discussed, Nate and I had a discussion about it, and essentially what's happening on Railroad Street is the, in, between the, between Main Street and the railroad tracks, there's a, there's a section that's delaminating, basically the wearing course is coming away from the base course. So that's, that's, that's something that the town would like to get taken care of. So what we envisioned is, or what Nate envisioned was essentially milling one, one and a half inches of pavement and then paving over it. He doesn't believe that needs to be reconstructed or rehabilitated, so it would just be a mill and an overlay. And it would only be that section between the railroad tracks and Main Street. I'm not sure how many, exactly how many feet, but in my mind's eye, I see maybe 20 feet of roadway, is it?
Is that on the?
Go ahead.
I, I'm sorry, is that on the public portion of Railroad Street or on the private portion of Railroad Street?
It's on the public portion, it's, it's where, it's right at the intersection with Main Street, in front of the railroad, in front of the railroad tracks.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So Ray, so Ray, the length we're talking about here is 20 feet in length?
I, I can look on the drawing here, I don't know off the top of my head. Well, the railroad tracks aren't shown on the drawing I have in front of me. Kathy, do you have that drawing in front of you, can you scale that off?
Yep, just a minute.
So just measure off from the intersection with Main Street, right at the curb line, to railroad tracks.
I'll print that out, just a second.
I guess, I guess the length really doesn't matter to me, I guess, as much as a question about who's responsible for, who's going to be responsible for doing that process and making that repair? Is that something that the applicant would do, or is that something that the town would do?
Well, my, my understanding is that, you know, Nate, Nate's feeling on it is the, you know, there's additional traffic. Again, the, you know, the wearing course is delaminating, the additional traffic will only just make that situation worse, so.
Well, I guess, yeah, and, and, and I'm not sure it's all due to this, this new applicant. I mean, we have, there's several places that use that, I mean, you have Dave Rogers' place, you have, you have the hotel there, you have the Hobo Railroad, so I'm not sure all of that is, is truly, you know, just, just a new applicant's responsibility, and that's why I just wanted to make sure that there should be something, whether it's shared or not shared, or whether the town does it, however, that's.
But it could be a condition, this requirement to get a driveway permit, is that correct, Ray?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, hold on.
Yeah, so, so the, the other, the other thing that could potentially happen is when, when the town goes for the driveway permit, the DOT could come back and make some, they could require some changes to that intersection. I believe Nate has heard something to the effect that the district is going to be looking for some line works, some line striping, that DOT may actually require, you know, a paved apron between the railroad tracks and Main Street. So the DOT may actually drive that requirement as well.
Okay, Jeff, I saw Jeff's hand up for us, and Ron?
Yeah, so, so as far as the public part of it, I mean, to me, I think it's a pretty small price to pay for the town to fix whatever it is, 20, 30 feet of roadway that's, that's owned by the town or public roadway, you know, in order to have a $20 million medical facility in the town for the town's people. You know, if there's work to be done on Railroad Street, then obviously that's going to be shared by us, by the Hobo, by the hotel, by all the participants up that way. But as far as the initial part for the town, I mean, it seems like that's a pretty small price to pay for these major medical facilities in the community.
Okay, Ron, do you have a question?
No, I'm just screen sharing to give you a visual of where it is, so the railroad track to about this line where it abuts Main Street, so you're talking about a wedge of asphalt here.
Okay.
So, so I guess, Jim, my, my, my question would be, do we, do we need to address this as part of this application? Or not, because there was questions about it, and, I mean, I kind of agree with Jeff, and it's kind of a shared thing, and that the town is going to get a substantial amount of tax revenue out of this because it's not a tax-free properties, so.
Okay.
OJ is on here, he's a board member, maybe he could chime in and say what, how he feels about it.
Sorry, I had to unmute, yeah, I, I would agree with, with Paul's statement there that, that first of all, that we're talking about a very small, almost insignificant amount of roadway when you look at the whole, the whole amount of town infrastructure. Secondly, it's, it's already showing deterioration and is in need of repair with or without the, the, the building of this facility. Also, when you look at the amount of traffic going in there, you know, based on the total use of that road, I would think that Rogers and Hobo together, and the hotel, the three of them would, would produce far more traffic than this, this new facility would be. So to try to get this, the new place, the new guy on the block to pay for improvements that are benefiting the three substantial existing uses, it's just, it doesn't seem the right thing to do to me.
Yeah, I, thank you, OJ, I mean, I do have one other comment about that.
Go ahead, Joe, I'll get to you after that, after you, Paul.
I, the only concern, the only question I do have, and as I said, I agree with Jeff and I know J's comments, is that if the DOT gives more information which requires something different at that intersection, I think that that would probably be borne by the applicant, wouldn't it? Because the DOT study is related to the incoming traffic for this application and how that affects the egress and exit of that, of that subject parcel. So I, I think there's a, I think there's a distinction here, there's a distinction between just fixing road surfaces there, but if there's some new requirements per DOT, then I think that has to be borne by the applicant, if, if, should they request anything.
Okay, what if they decide the resurfacing of the road is part of the, is required before they get the driveway permit?
Well, I think the town, to me, the town, to me, the town will pay for that resurfacing no matter what, it's just.
All right, is that the consensus of the board that the town should pay to resurface the road? Joe?
Well, the town was more than 20 feet, we own up to the intersection of Clark's property and Donovan, that's a town road.
Yeah.
Legally, it's about like 100 feet, not 20 feet. That's a, that old piece of town road is, and all going down for red, in front of red degraces and down through there, that's also a certified town road. Under a town ordinance, it was deed is over to the town by the, by the state of New Hampshire back in 1972, I believe. I was in on that deal.
Okay.
I'd just like some clarification, I mean, I mean, it's just a topic we've discussed, and I think just two things here. One is the condition of the roadway that needs to be fixed, as it sits right, right now, it's, it's deterioration. But I think if the DOT comes back, then I think that that truly is, if they say they need a stoplight, or they need a, I don't know what they can need, you know, maybe a bar that goes down before the, the railroad track or something like that, I don't know, I don't know what, what they're going to say, but I think that if they say that due to their, their information and their study that it needs certain things, I, I don't think that that's the town's responsibility.
Okay, thank you, any other questions from the board?
I did not, I, I did have one other one, is that?
Go ahead.
Kathy, I, I talked to you last time about getting a note on the plan saying that you were not, that this, this application was not going to be using the access onto Connector Road. Whether people did it or not, at least it would be the intent that the, that the applicant would not be funneling traffic out through onto Connector Road, I think that's Connector Road out the back way, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, what we did, we felt that it was going to be pretty, pretty difficult for us to prevent traffic from, from using Connector Road. So by putting up the no left turn signs, you may still get some local, local folks who know it's there using it, but I guess we felt that the no left turn signs was the solution that we could utilize to control vehicles heading towards Connector Road. If we put a note on the plan, no vehicles to Connectors Road, we just weren't sure how, how that was going to be enforceable versus a no left turn sign is something that people see and can, can make their decision based on that.
How about if it is a private road or a private drive?
Well, I guess I agree with that, but the only thing is that as time goes on, maybe ownership changes, and, you know, if, if, if there's nothing in the plan or nothing in writing that says that it's, it's not the intent to do that, then, then you can, you could say that you could use that. So to me, it, it's just clarification that it's not the intent to use that.
Hey, Jim?
Yeah, go ahead.
Presently, if you go over the property, you're going to find that Ben's blocked off the access from, from Connector Road going into the properties, except for limited use for his, for his own business. It's not a public way going all the way through.
Right. So perhaps put that on there, not a public way, yeah, Jeff, do you have a question?
Well, I say, I mean, Ben has that blocked off probably from November until still now, so regardless of what we put up, people aren't going to be able to go through it because he puts barricades up for most of the year.
Okay, Paul?
Yeah, Ray Corber, question for you. I know that Horizon says given a $75,000 bonding requirement, have you reviewed that and are you okay with that?
We have reviewed it, we do have comments on it, and then we will get those comments back to Horizon.
So you can't review the comments tonight, because if we're going to give some sort of a conditional permit, it would be nice to know.
Sure, let me pull it up. So I'm just, I mean, we didn't, we haven't done any quantity takeoffs, so we're assuming the quantities that are shown on the, on the estimate are correct, but the, the unit prices are for $6 for excavation embankment work is low, typically it would be almost two times that. We're not sure how, what the treatment is on the infiltration basin itself, I assume Kathy, it's going to be loamed and seeded?
Yes, yep, that's included, yeah, I included the loam, seed, and fertilize. That total square yardage is the whole parcel area that's disturbed, that needs.
Okay, so same thing, the unit price on the loam and seed and fertilize at a dollar a square yard is low. We would, we would suggest increasing that number. Erosion control, we think that number is low at 10,000 on a lump sum. And I think that was the grating and the ditching, so I'm not quite sure what that entails, Kathy, I was going to ask you about that, but is that just that swells and?
Yeah.
The site work itself, or?
So what, what we thought was that in order to stabilize the site, we did not need to install all of the closed drainage system, the catch basins, culverts, all of that. What we really needed to do to stabilize the site should, for some reason, construction stopped partway through was that we needed to direct all of the storm runoff to the pond. You know, first we need to construct the pond, then we need to direct the runoff to the pond. So it was, you know, in general, the site right now goes, goes towards that pond, we haven't really changed that. But let's say that we, you know, get the building pad started, or start some of the fill for the building pad, and then the project stops, we need to rectify that and still give, still give the surface water a way to run towards that pond. And so this was really doing some rough grading on the site to, to direct the water that way, and then in some areas, doing some ditching to make sure that we were able to, to collect all the water and send it to the pond. So it is not the installation of the proposed design, it's, it's more about stabilizing a partially constructed site.
Okay, thank you, and the other consideration is, we have to think about, you know, the stage of construction, so does the, because I think there was a discussion last, last time we got together on this project about if they're partially the way through putting in storm drainage or water or sewer, is it the town's intent that you would want to just cap those utilities and leave them in place? Or do you want to continue to make the connections? And so that wherever project comes in after, it would ultimately have those connections available to it. So that's a decision that the town would have to make, and if the town would like those connections to be made, then there's got to be some allowance put into the performance bond for those costs as well.
So.
Go ahead, Paul.
So I guess it, it sounds like we're that Ray's not quite in sync with Kathy a little bit here, but I guess my question would be, how do we, how do we give any kind of approval based on not having a bond amount? Do we make a?
We could make an approval based on the amount determined by the town, and then, you know, the board can discuss a possible contingency, last time, you know, we've done 10 or 15%. Jeff, do you have your hand up?
That is for, yeah, if I could say something, so we probably should have done this early on, but just around the bonding process, you know, our team we have here with this project is made up of Remi Medical Properties, which is the largest privately-held operative medical facilities in the country. Just last year alone, they did $250 million of projects just like this one, last year alone. Don Hamper is the owner of Clear Choice Urgent Care and runs 14 urgent cares in the Northeast. Wells Horizon, as you know, Littleton Hospital and several other companies working with the project. You know, someone back a couple minutes ago asked, why, why is Littleton doing this in Lincoln? And Littleton's hospital mission is to provide high-quality healthcare to the North Country, and that is literally the only reason we're coming down there, because we feel there's a need for good healthcare in the Lincoln area, and that's, that's what we're about. You know, as far as the bond goes, as far as this project, it's different than a lot of you guys deal with. You know, this isn't a mom and pop coming in building a hotel and partway through COVID hits or economy tanks, and they go, hey, you know, we're leaving, we can't finish this project. These are medical facilities that will be completed. Every penny Littleton Hospital spends, not necessarily on anything, is money we can't put back into our facilities or medical equipment. necessarily on anything is money we can't put back into our facilities or medical equipment. We're a nonprofit organization. We don't get one penny out of this for any single per every penny we make goes back into redoing our facilities, paying steady add equipment. The contractors we hire for this project will definitely be bonded. If they walk out on us, we're gonna get, collect the money from our, from their insurance company to finish this project. So we certainly intend to bond, have the people we work with bonded, but for us, there's no way we're not in these projects. And, and, uh, again, any money we don't use just goes back into the healthcare facilities.
Thanks. Thank you. All right, Paul?
Yeah, Jeff, just so you know, I don't think anybody thinks ill of, of the medical center, um, approach, but you, you gotta realize that the town of Lincoln has said um, developments come in and start and not finish, and the town of Lincoln has had some ser- had to make some serious considerations in, in that respect. So um, that's why the bonding was set up in the first place. So we're all on the same playing field, and we can make sure that um, whoever it is, um, finishes what they start.
I, I understand. I'm just, we're, we're just a bit different than a lot of things. You know, we're a medical facility. You know, we're not here to make a profit. We're here to provide a service to the community. And there's, you know, no economy, no change is gonna change what we're gonna do. That's all.
Joe, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I want a couple of questions. On this, on this building coming up. Um, like Jeff said, well, let's be a while. I didn't, some people draw and ask me some questions about this. Unlike, one of the hotels asked me, what time will be startup costs in the morning, times in the morning? Because they have four hundred people in the hotel in the morning. And all, all day long with the old comfort inn, they wonder what the hours are gonna be for construction. How would that adversely affect their clientele with four hundred plus people in the hotel when it's back in capacity? Secondly, this will be a walk-in, this will be like a walk-in facility, we can go in and they can't refuse you. Was it like an emergency room? Was it just be a go in where you have to have a credit card or an insurance package?
I wanna answer that.
Yeah, this is, this is Bob Nutter. I'm the CEO at the hospital. I, I, I'll, I'll take a stab at that, Joe, um, to the best I can. Uh, the construction, of course, will, will do as much as we can during construction to be respectful of any of the neighbors around. It's typical in any of these construction things. Um, hours of operation of, of the urgent care will be somewhere around either eight to eight, it could be nine to nine. Those will be set by the traffic patterns and the needs of the community more than anything else. Uh, and relative to that, uh, we are, uh, we are an equity partner. We're a fifty-fifty partner uh, with the, uh, with Clear Choice. And so as, as that, uh, and as a nonprofit, we do take anybody that comes through. There are uh, rules and regulations. It is, as you, as you mentioned earlier, a, a for-profit entity. So there are, uh, different rules that apply to nonprofits than they do for, for profits. But is, it is our intent to make sure that we can serve as many people of that community regardless of their ability to pay. Uh, but that's a fairly small percentage, uh, and the whole purpose, uh, as I think Jeff was referring to is our mission and our goal is to try to drive down the cost of healthcare and provide it as close to home as possible. So to that extent, it is our intent to work, uh, to, to make sure that we achieve that. We have an operating, uh, urgent care up in our Littleton Hospital right now, uh, and we would expect to see very similar processes in, in Lincoln.
One, uh, question for you. That urgent care in Littleton, how does that affect the hospital? Is it helping or is it, is it a detriment for funding coming in for patients?
I'm sorry, I, I, I kinda lost a little piece of that.
Is the hospital in Littleton?
Yes.
And the urgent care, they work hand in hand, or is it just one, does one feed off the other, or they, they compete with each other?
No, it, it's, it's all part of the same family. We're all part of the, our urgent care is, is, uh, basically another department of the hospital where you can have walk-in, you just walk right in and you can be seen. You don't need an appointment. Um, uh, and you, you don't need insurance. You can just walk right in, just like you can in an emergency department. But its intent is to be the much lower acute, uh, cases. Uh, ruleouts, those types of things, bumps, bruises, scrapes, sprains, strains, those types of things. Uh, that, that's what we really see in an urgent care. They can assess patients when they come through, and if, if the patient is in need of higher care, whether it's an emergency department or something else, we then will be able to transfer that patient to the emergency department of the, of the patient's choice.
Oh, that, I thank you. So I had several, I had several people call me this week to asking about it.
Sure.
The thing too, I would say, Joe, is that the, if you go to the urgent care, the cost is way less than going to the emergency room. You know, people, emergency rooms, headaches, colds, and it's very expensive, and to go to an urgent care is much cheaper. We can budget entirely different rate structure, and that's why we have it.
That's good. The last time I went to the emergency room, it cost me three hundred dollars. I was with my insurance.
Uh, yeah, I have a question for Kathy. Kathy, um, will the full detention pond be constructed? Um, at the beginning, or is this gonna be some sort of a phased approach to it, or? I, I know, because, you know, your, your urgent care facility is the first part, you're gonna construct it, then there's another bigger building. So you plan on phasing the, the, um, pension bond as well, or will the whole detention bond be constructed at the start?
No, the, the whole, uh, forbey and infiltration basin will be constructed. We, um, designed it for the flow for the entire site, so it, it doesn't make sense to construct that in phases. Um, you know, cost-wise and construction-wise, it just makes sense to put the whole structure in and, you know, until, until the next phase is, is built, it will be oversized, but that's okay.
Yeah. And Jim, the other question I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify again, I, I forgot who asked it way, way early on. That, that the buildings that are being built are taxable. They are not, they're not taxable. Item, is that, am I correct in that? For the record?
So can someone answer that? It's just a taxable property?
Yeah, this is Bob again. It, it is our intent that this would be a taxable entity. Uh, in that, uh, we are looking to have partners with other, uh, healthcare providers as we are with the urgent care. We do like to find ways that we can partner with other folks that actually then makes it, uh, as we partner with for-profits or private equity people like, uh, a physician who may wanna participate, uh, in, in this practice with us. If that's the case, then that actually turns it into a for-profit, uh, entity, and that is our intent.
That's what you told us the last time we talked to you also. Thank you.
Welcome.
Kathy, I have a question about the alignment of Railroad Street towards the end where the right of way is. It seems to go right through the Hobo's parking lot.
Um, yeah, so, so there's a fifty-foot, um, pop, uh, right-of-way along that parcel. And, um, the existing parking lot does encroach into that fifty-foot right-of-way, as you can see on the plan. Um, there is, um, I think it is narrowest. Um, there's about twenty feet from the edge of the existing parking to the right-of-way, and we are currently, um, in conversation with the property owners about that.
Okay, and, uh, so Hobo Railroad or the Clark family, they're gonna maintain ownership of that right-of-way, the P land under it?
Yes, yes, we'll, we'll have a, an easement, um, just like the hotel has an easement for access as well as the, um, water and sewer utilities and the electric. We, we'll have a similar, um, similar easement.
Okay. Ray, do you have any thoughts on that?
Uh, yes, um, yeah, so I, so when you look at, if you're looking at the plan, um, you know, you have Railroad Street coming into a parking lot, which is fine. It then ends into a parking lot. Uh, but then the, the alignment of Railroad Street is in direct alignment with, uh, what, what, and Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, obviously parking spaces, but it looks like there's two islands that encroach within that footprint. So, um, you, you just have a lot of different traffic movements happening in a very small confined area. You have folks coming out of the medical facility parking lot of one or both drives, potentially with people backing out of parking spaces and people coming in from railroad into the, uh, Railroad Street into the Hobo Railroad parking lot. So, um, we would recommend that, that, that be looked at to make sure that the traffic flow going in and out of the medical facility parking lot, the traffic flow within the parking lot, limits of the Hobo Railroad, and the traffic coming in and off of Railroad Street. Uh, be looked at to ensure that we're not having a, you know, potential conflicts in traffic flow.
Hey Ray? According to the map, looks like it's gonna affect between fifteen and twenty pocket places at the Hobo. They have to move those pocket places out of, out of the right-of-way.
Uh, yeah.
I don't know how that would be.
I, I don't either. Uh, we're just, we're just raising the issue at this point. Um, there's just a lot going on in a very small footprint. And it, from a traffic safety standpoint, it warrants consideration in our view.
Okay, Kathy, you have a question?
I would just say, so we are talking with Ben about that, and if we do have to do something there, and he was a parking, says, we've given him an easement to use our parking lot. Because again, the big medical facility will be closed on weekends, and that's when really he has most of his business on the weekends. So we have some spaces, medical building that won't be used. And so we need for him to use those if he needs them, so we have to remove some of it.
Paul?
So Jeff, my question to you would be the same as it was to Kathy. Are, are you gonna construct all of the parking lot, lot in your first phase, or just the ones that are going through your urgent care?
I'm assuming it's just the urgent care parking to start.
So that's, that, that's not very many parking spaces that, that I see. There's only very few in the year, first lot there.
Right, but I think the conflict with the, um, Hobo parking lot, the entrance into the urgent care starts south of the, um, parking lot. So the, the conflict is really gonna happen with the medical office building parking lot, not the urgent care.
Well, right, and, and that was my question for asking, because if, if we're approving this, then we and we're looking for a condition that this traffic be, uh, looked at, then it needs to be part of the approval. My condition, so. That would need to be looked at, I would think as part of this application. Am I correct?
Jim?
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
I was just thinking of something. Think, uh, the Hobo's gonna lose between fifteen and twenty pocket places. Where they have to come in for a, uh, a, uh, change of use in the, in the original permit, which was a, this was all applied on the original permit for the Hobo, if you remember. Lose fifteen pocket places would adversely affect them, would probably just nudge those of them. I just wanna have it done, so we get surprised at the end. Ducks and roll, we just have to sign it, enough to worry about it. It's all agreed to beforehand with the town and the Hobo and the urgent care facility. We have nothing to worry about at the end of the, getting the piss, the, the permission approvals.
Yeah.
Ben is well aware of what's going on there and working out any parking ranges with him, and he's totally comfortable. He says it's four times a year that he uses his entire lawn, be four times a year. And on those times, our new building would, would be open, but would be closed, involves parking spaces for him. He's not concerned about it.
Hey. All right. Um, any other questions from the board or staff? Paul?
I'd like to make a motion, open, open it to public comment.
Okay, is there a second? Joe, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
No opposed. All right, members of the public, does anyone have any comments he'd like the board to consider? No, Paul?
Motion to close public comment.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
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 All right, to the board, if any further discussion on the matter. Okay.
Yeah, I just, just wanna review, uh, I guess with Ray Corber. Um, you said that you've received the stormwater um, plan, but have not reviewed it yet. Is that correct?
We've re- well, we've reviewed the drainage, the, we've reviewed the drainage design, basically the layout of the facilities on the site. Um, and we have reviewed, we have received the alteration of terrain permit application. And in that alteration of terrain permit application is the drainage analysis. And it's the drainage analysis that we haven't yet reviewed.
Okay, do you see a- anything in the, um, anything that could be in that drainage analysis that would so drastically require a change that it would not fit on this site or would need to, uh, we, you know, whatever. We do the parking lot, or we do the grading, or is it? You know, where, where do you see that? Is that a showstopper, or is that something that we can approve with the condition of, of working this out with you?
Uh, I think the, I mean, based on what we reviewed, again, we reviewed the drainage design, and based on that, we don't think there's a showstopper here. Um, the drainage analysis, again, we didn't review. But given, given the, just in my, just looking at the plan itself, given the footprint of the stormwater management facilities, um, it seems to me that it, I don't see any reason why it can't work. But again, the devil is gonna be in the details.
Okay.
So we don't, we don't see a showstopper here, to answer your question, okay?
Okay, and what about, um, water in, uh, sewer plants? Do you see, uh, have those been fully reviewed and, 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 and done with, or are there any other steps with those two parts?
No, uh, as far as the water and sewer capacity analyses, we've reviewed those. And, uh, we will have comments on those. But we don't expect our comments are gonna change the loadings and the demands significantly. It will change the number. And the reason why we think it's important to get those right is so that there's obviously, uh, you know, documentation in the record about what the, uh, what those expected loadings are to be. So again, to, to use your terminology, we do not see a showstop there for water and sewer capacity. As far as the, um, uh, fire protection, uh, based on what we saw with the Riverwalk development that was recently completed, uh, there was hydraulic analysis that was completed at that site. We expect to get the same results here. And there, I think Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you were looking at a thousand gallons. You were looking at a thousand gallons a minute for two hours. For, yeah, so we, we would suspect that the analysis, when it comes back from Weston and Sampson, we'll confirm that that's sufficient. Again, no showstopper on that front.
Okay, Paul?
Yeah, I, I, I have a question with that. Oh, James, I'm sorry if I'm buttoning on you here, but um, Ray, Ray, when you're talking about the water and sewer capacities and the fire protection and your analysis, does that consider all of the, um, current, uh, capacity, uh, that's been given the permits and, and approvals to date?
Yes, we did a, I think we, we talked about last week, we did a, um, on the wastewater side, we did a, uh, uh, a desktop study wastewater capacity analysis sys- on the system, on the treatment plant and on the, uh, segments of interceptor that, uh, enter into the treatment plant. And based on that analysis and comparing the loadings from the, what's what are called the, uh, the vested developments, uh, unbuilt, uh, but approved. Um, this, this facility should, there should be sufficient capacity in your system to handle those and this facility.
And, and, and that's the same with the water and the fire protection?
Uh, yes, and when it comes to fire protection, we would assume that, you know, if there's a fire, it's gonna be like one fire downtown, not multiple fires.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, well, I, I, I just wanted to make sure, so when some of these other people that have been given approvals come in, that, that this doesn't rear its, you know, head, that's all.
Yeah. I, I, I will just, I think, uh, I think, uh, town manager. I I I will just, I think, uh I think uh town manager Burbank had mentioned something at some point, you know, you're gonna tip that scale. You haven't tipped it yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, come on.
Nope, that was it.
Jeff? Jeff, go ahead.
You know, on the infrastructure, on the infrastructure too, you know. I know there's a lot of talk about these four projects coming online and creating an issue for the infrastructure in town. Another positive way to look at it is these four properties, the two hotels, the second phase of Riverwalk. And these medical facilities could create tax revenue of close to a million dollars for the town. The town could borrow twelve million dollars on a fifteen year note. And pay that back just from the property tax on these four facilities. And not contribute to any, you know, no, no other taxpayers in the community would have to contribute a penny. And ten dollars would go a long way to fix the infrastructure. So you know, there is a positive. I get that it does stretch the infrastructure at the same time. This is a great town and community. It could be focused on borrowing money for fifteen year note, about twelve million.
Paul?
Jeff, that's why Lincoln has such a low tax rate. We don't borrow a lot of money. Mr. Chair, are you, are you ready for a a motion? Because I'd like to make a motion to.
Well, I got a few more things I wanted to discuss here.
Yeah.
All right, we talked about stormwater management. Uh how does the board feel about the bond?
That was gonna be part of my motion was I think that the bonding amount should be um that raised and the applicant. Um should should come to terms with the the amount of bond. I think that should be a condition of approval.
Okay, and and we also need a contingency, you know, construction's going up. So you know, perhaps we should add a fifteen percent contingency. Throw on that out there, you guys can discuss it. Anyone have any thoughts, Joe?
Well, dealing with what Paul said. He's somewhat on the money because remember back in the nineteen nineties? When the, you know what, hit the fan in town Lincoln, all the contractors had bonds. The main developer went fluie and many people lost up to quarter million dollars. Because of the incident that happened and we, the town had to, part of the problem was they never finished the drainage and force rich properly at the time. So it could be, we have to be careful on it.
All right, Mark, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I did. I just wanted to say, just a couple of quick things. First of all, the character and the nature of this development has not been really addressed by the planning board. As opposed to a straight commercial development, I think that uh Mr. Woodward's comments uh should be very well noted. I think the need that the town has for this development should be carefully considered. I think the chances that this group from Littleton Regional Hospital will default on this project are minimal. I've had extensive experience in development work of a much bigger scale than this. And I can tell you that I think it's extraordinary to ignore the character and the need and the nature of the community interest. Served by this project while focusing on the requirement for a picky bond for the people. I think frankly, it's an insult and I feel ashamed uh to be part of that request. And I understand the need for the town to protect itself. But the chances that even a partial failed development that is abandoned in mid course will not result. In accrued value or an accreted value to the project, to the properties, to the site. That can be used in a different commercial sense are really de minimis. And I just feel that it's focusing in an inordinate degree. Uh on on this aspect of of the development. And and lastly, to say that we don't borrow money. And that's why our tax rate's low is to ignore every single principle of finance. And every single principle of development and progress. And we need to encourage Littleton Regional Hospital to reach out to us. And to develop this property in our town, and I hope we welcome them better than by nitpicking whether or not they have a bond for completion. That's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I I, Mark, thank you. I was uh gonna speak uh to the same thing. You know, first of all, the 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 developers that we've had in the past that have failed in projects are all. Uh residential second homes speculative projects that when the economy dipped. They were, they were um pulled under because of that. I see this as a project totally unrelated to the secondary home market. Um that would be, that 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 brings that kind of a risk to the town. Second of all, nearly all of those second home developments that we're talking about from the, from the past have been built on. Um very sloping land that required significant site work. For, you know, roads, utilities and all of this stuff. Uh we're talking a site here that's, that's about as flat as you're gonna find in the town of Lincoln. Um with with utilities practically in front of the place. Um so I just don't see a lot of risk to the town. And 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 I guess in looking at a bond, what are we looking at protecting? And maybe I'm missing something here, but it seems like um if in the, in the, the. Ardest chance that they started this project and and then walked away from it. Um. What, you know, the the drainage is already running back to the area where they're gonna put the drainage. It it seems like we could get a bulldozer in there in two hours of work be done, be done with stabilizing. Uh maybe I'm oversimplifying it, but it certainly doesn't seem like this is a major concern to me for the town. And 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 I won't repeat Mark's comments, but totally agree with him when we look at the big picture and what this brings to the town of Lincoln. Um I I I don't think it's a a real necessary request to have this bonded.
Paul?
Yeah, I I disagree with that. I think bonding protects everybody, um including the person on the project. It, and and I have one other further question about that. Is the entire lot going to be cut? And um as a part of the initial project? Or will it be just the part where the um first medical facilities, where the first property is gonna be?
So if if you look at the plan, um the um. The tree line does go onto both parcels. But again, from a, from a construction standpoint, just like we're talking about constructing the entire. Um stormwater infiltration basin, where you get a logger in there. Um it it makes more sense to log. Everything that you're gonna log at once is is my experience. I don't know if, if there's any plans to handle this any differently, but. I would suspect that we would, we would log the the entire parcel and um. You know, start doing the stumping altogether and not segregate it to two phases. I think the two phases are more about putting the the finishing materials, the. The gravels and the pavement and the building and and those kinds of items. Whereas the the prep of the site from a, from a cost perspective makes more sense to do that once. But but again, I'm not, not the developer, but that's how I would go about it.
Well, I guess, I I guess my question to you then Kathy is, so if you're gonna cut the entire lot? And if you're gonna stump it, how are you going to direct your drainage um to where it needs to go if if you do that? Without having your, your final grades and or or is it, is your intent to do your final grades and all of that as well?
Well, that's part of the um, the the cost estimate that we had done. Um you know, we had, we had five, we had estimated five days with a crew. Um you know, a full crew excavator dozer setup um to do the grading and ditching. So that we could direct the water towards the detention pond. And and currently, the site pretty much slopes from, from the north down to that um. South corner and and that's the same way that we're going to have it go. So even if we uh cut some trees and and do some stumping. The general flow of that property is not being changed and it's headed down to that corner. We'll just, just do some, some uh, some rough grading to make sure that it does get to that detention pond. Should the, you know, project stop for some reason.
Well, yeah, I mean, you're gonna have some, in a high flow rain situation, you're gonna have some serious erosion control on that. Everything that you cut if it's not finished and not directed and, you know, and that was my concern.
Yeah, I, you know, I think that this soil, this soil type is is not something we're used to seeing up on the. The hill and sloped properties. This, this had such a rapid infiltration that in our infiltration basin, we have to actually add amenities. To slow the infiltration down. And you know, um just, just being on that site. The stormwater, um because it's a, it's a really sandy, nice gravelly, so clean soil. Um it it tends to um enter the ground rather than run off. Um you know, looking over that whole site currently, there's, there's no evidence of any, any erosion. And and again, there's not the steep slopes, there's not poor soil. So it's, it's a really nice lot to develop.
All right, thank you.
Joe?
Just to paraphrase what she said, when the Hobo first started, I was in on it. You get out about fifteen feet, it's nothing but clear, soft sand, the drainage there is phenomenal. Best I've seen in Lincoln, I can say go. Now, of course, that was thirty years ago and I don't think it's changed much.
Right. All right, so I'm gonna pull the board about, you know, the bonding requirement. OJ?
No.
Joe?
I would say a small bond, this cover the, we have to reseed this top if it doesn't get reseeded. As a parking lot.
Steve? Steve, you muted.
How's that?
That's good, I can hear you. How do you feel about a bond?
Yeah, yeah, I think we need a bond.
Okay, Paul?
I think we need a bond.
Okay, and I I agree with, I think we need to bond. Um so that'll be something discussed with the town engineer. All right, and let's see, then there's the issue of connector road. Do we want anything further than what's um? What's already been discussed? We talked about a no left turn. Reduce traffic. Was that sufficient?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, Carol, you muted.
Um I think when we talked to the, we had a staff meeting. Um the staff had suggested having a private way or some other additional sign uh for that. That part of the road that goes to connector road. Um because if they miss the left-hand turn and they happen to be local. Um that would be clearer that um if they would just wanna add that one sign, that was one of the suggestions that was made at the staff meeting. I mean, it's obviously up to you, but I'm just relaying the recommendation, that's all.
Okay, Kathy, you have anything to say on that?
Um no, I I mean, I think that makes sense to to give people a couple of opportunities to see that they're not supposed to go that way. Because sometimes we might miss that first opportunity. And I don't think that there's any issues with with putting up a, a private way sign. And I, and I don't see anybody, yeah, no, I think that would be doable, yes. And make sense.
All right, any further discussion from the board? Are we ready to vote, Paul?
Yeah, I was just gonna make a, I was just gonna make a motion if you're ready to vote.
Okay, well, I have a list of, list of um conditions here about everything we've discussed.
Right, right, I was gonna make a.
You go ahead.
I was gonna make a motion to approve um the applicant, the uh application. Uh based on the following.
Okay.
Conditions.
You make a motion and then someone second and then we can discuss the conditions.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
So I think we need, so so I think we need a condition that the um hydraulic analysis for the water, sewer and fire protection. Uh be completed by the town engineer and approved. We also need the condition that the town engineer review the stormwater plan and approve that as submitted. We also need the condition that the alteration of terrain permit needs to be approved and submitted. Um the bonding uh would need to be approved by the town engineer. The, also the condition that the New Hampshire DOT um and gives approval for the project. And um that the sign. That the sign needs to go, the seventy-five foot sign needs to go before the ZBA. Sorry about that, my voice.
Yeah, all signs, you know, all appropriate sign permits and uh special exceptions as.
Yes, and that um. Let's see, I think there was one about the traffic flow coming into the medical properties. How that was going to be, that that the engineer had to review that. And um come to, uh approve that as well.
Okay, so let me read off, I have these all condensed here.
Okay.
So applicants shall obtain all necessary state and town approval. Town permits and approvals, all state permits issued to the applicant for the project shall be submitted to the town. Is there any discussion on that? Okay.
Um, how are you, does that need to make sure that the the town engineer weighs in on all that as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Um applicants shall resolve all technical matters to ensure compliance with applicable town ordinances and impact to town, impacts to town infrastructure.
But you're giving the general, you're giving generals, I think, you know, shouldn't we be a little more specific? Because it just seems like being general about it and.
Okay, well, we can say including, including but not limited to, if you wanna do it that way, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'd just like to make sure that the things that we discussed tonight and and in the past are are listed out so that. Um there's no question about what's supposed to be approved and what's not.
Okay, so we have the water and sewer capacity. Hydraulics is fire protection.
Yeah.
Um.
Stormwater.
Stormwater management. Alteration of terrain.
And the DOT, I think, might be one of those, I'm not sure.
I have that, I have something, I have another one for the drive we've written down.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Jim, this is Ray.
Yeah.
Yeah, as as far as the alteration in terrain permit, that's a state permit, so DES will review that.
Okay, so that'll be covered in item one.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, um applicant shall submit written documentation confirming access is granted to the applicant across any privately held property. I'm sure you're gonna negotiate that with your deed anyway. Anyone have any comments on that?
Well.
Okay. Applicant shall pay all engineering and construction costs related to obtaining and complying with New Hampshire DOT requirements. Want to add, put in this, you know, that we're not gonna make, that's not gonna be a requirement, they paved that strip of railroad street. But you wanna leave it as is?
I would like to add that.
Okay, OJ, you had your hand up?
I was gonna say the same thing. We could just say with the exception of of any resurfacing of the town portion of railroad street.
Yeah, which is considered ordinary maintenance.
Fine.
Okay. All right, um applicant shall provide performance on an amount as determined by the town for the project.
Who is the town?
Town is the technical, town is the technical review staff, the administration. Town is the technical, town is the technical review staff, the administration, town planner.
I thought that, I thought the selectmen approved bonding requirements.
Okay, now, let me, Jason, can you weigh in on that?
So, Joe, go ahead if you have a comment first.
Well, back in the first part, when it first came in, we had this, first of the year, we had a discussion about bonding and that the planning board would be responsible for the bonding so they could review when it'd be released. So, we don't have any fiascs like we've had in the past. Am I correcting that, Jim?
Yes.
So, we go from there.
So, I will just add that it is a, a, appropriate that the planning board, if they choose to do so, make that requirement as the town, as it was worded, and that be as Jim said, the technical review committee, which will have the input from Ray, as everybody has discussed today. So, not necessitating select board approval.
Because in the past, we've had some bonding that was unimproved, that was released because we had new staff coming in for the town. They didn't know what was going, they didn't know, not, not to their detriment, but they didn't know what the stories was. So, it's in the bonding get released and the town almost got the hell out of it before it. So, if the planning board knows about it, we have a chance to, it's highly unlikely, a lot of members of the planning board are gonna disappear in a couple of years for releasing the bond or sooner. So, at least we'll know about it. If new people come on board.
Okay, so applicants shall, let me read.
Jeff, Jeff has a question.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Jeff.
Hey, so on the bond, let's say, let's say that we work out with Ray that we do a seventy-five thousand dollar bond. What if the hospital puts seventy-five thousand dollars in an escrow account that could be used to refurbish the property if we walked away from this unfinished? And if the project's finished, that seventy-five thousand comes back to us?
That sounds reasonable.
I live with that, yeah. I mean, anyone else have any thoughts?
Yeah, I, I, I would just add with interest.
What's that again?
I would just add the word, add the wording with interest. I agree with Jeff. I think that's a great idea.
So do I.
But I would add the words with interest because you don't know when it, it's gonna be released, so.
All right, so applicants shall place seventy-five thousand in an escrow account to ensure, what's that, Paul?
With interest.
Well, you know, probably gonna pay one quarter or one percent.
That's okay.
All right, so applicants shall, shall place into, into an interest-bearing escrow account, the sum of seventy-five thousand to ensure site stabilization.
That sounds fine to me.
Jason, that sound all right to you?
It does.
Okay.
It, it, Jeff, you're okay with that?
Okay. And then applicants shall address potential traffic conflicts at the intersection of the, of the facility, parking lot, the hobo parking, hobo railroad parking lot and railroad street. Any further thought on that? Okay, and then the additional sign on connector road designated as a private way. Oh, no trespassing. Anything else?
I don't think you need no trespassing, but-
Yeah, let's be careful about how we word that.
Okay, well.
They're mandating a sign as part of this project on Ben Clark's property that might say something that Ben Clark wouldn't want.
Okay.
So, the, the applicant will, will, will install signage to discourage through traffic over to Connect, uh, Connector Road.
That's, that's fine.
But, yeah, with the approval, yeah.
Okay, you, can you say that again, OJ, that last one?
That, that, that the applicant will, will install signage to discourage through traffic over to Connector Road.
Okay.
Ben's own property, if he has the right of way to his own property, what is he gonna dictate on it?
Right, no, it's, it's private property, so no, no trespassing is probably a stretch.
Yeah.
There were times he packed people in back there and really busy the hobo.
Yeah. All right. Anything else from the board? Paul?
Yeah, I did make the comment about the seventy-five-foot sign that then needs to go to the ZBA.
Okay.
Doesn't that fall under your first provision that says they need all permits and special exceptions from the town?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes, they need sign permits, whatever special exceptions they need.
That's fine.
All right. Are we ready to vote? All right, so Paul made the motion, Joe has seconded it. Fall in favor with those conditions, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. All right, that motion carries. All right, congratulations, everybody.
Thank you very much for your time and your help. We really appreciate it.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, and we look forward to having you here in Lincoln soon.
Yeah, yeah. You know, it's, it's always a learning process on a planning board when you have an app, application like this. So, I hope you didn't take too much heat for it, but, and I know, I know it's a little long, but we get educated every time we have one of these. So, thank you for your time, patience.
Thank you for your good questions. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your help and support. We'll, we look forward to it.
All right, um, no new business, so other business, I, this is probably gonna be our last Zoom meeting. I think next meeting will be an in-person meeting. I wanted to throw that out there to see what the board thought about that.
I think that's a good idea. I think the, the town has started going back to having in-person selectmen meetings. And I think maybe, you know, as a board, we should probably start doing that, too.
Okay. Carol?
Yeah, the only thing is that if we have a big crowd like this, I don't know if you wanna talk about doing hybrid in, in the event that we do have a large crowd, because we still have social distancing and we only have room in the conference room for somewhere between eight and twelve people in addition to those of us who would attend as members of the board and staff. So, I'm just, I'm just suggesting that, you know, obviously Ron would like to not have Zoom meetings all the time. But I, I think there may be times when the Zoom meeting works and like, you know, Barb, she's off in Chicago or something, you know? And, you know, other people that are attending this meeting would have to come from far away. So, I don't know, I just put it out there as something to consider.
All right, Paul?
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with Carol, but I think the state's gone from not having a mandate to, to whatever best practices are. But, you know, in the interest of staying safe, I think Carol has a good point that we could go to a hybrid the, the way we left off before and kind of work our way backwards instead of working our way forwards to the hybrid. So, if we started with a hybrid and went, you know, that's the planning board members and a certain amount of, of other people were allowed. And other than that, you know, they could either call in and, and reserve a seat. And then other than that, it would have to be through, through Zoom. It, it is not how it was done before. Did they reserve a seat?
Last summer, we were doing hybrid meetings, you know, some, some in-person.
First come, first served, so.
Yeah, I mean, we can't have anyone reserving a seat. It'll be first come, first served, but-
But I think you have to allow some for the applicants, you know.
But I mean, I'm talking about members of the public.
Right, right.
Anyway, and also, some people have medical issues, you know, it's been, you know, Mark sometimes, you know, can't come. So, anyway, to think about that, too.
I think the hybrid model works. I think try that.
All right. I think we'll try that in the weeks from today, it's the twenty-sixth. Do we have anything on the twenty-sixth?
Yes, we do. We have the ponds, the Naperville Construction LLC, Brick Elliott, the, the ponds.
Okay, so we might have some, we might have some attendance. That'll be a good chance to try the hybrid model.
Yeah.
All right, is there anything else?
Not at the moment.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Second, Joe, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, good night, all.